All right, well, good evening, y'all. Thank you for being here. I'm glad that you are here to participate in the running of our city. Please remember that cell phones are not permitted in the council chambers. So if you have one, please at this time put it away, except as authorized by state law, Texas Government Code, Section 551.023. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. If you please rise for the questions.
I pledge allegiance to the Party of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, thank you. Hey, all council members are here. We have a quorum. City Secretary, proof of notice.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of this meeting was posted on November 25.
Any public comments, City Secretary?
We have none.
Okay, no presentations, recognitions, or proclamations. Moving on to the City Mayor Report. For the meet with the mayor, phone calls, emails, and text messages, the, what I heard this week was about water read estimations, estimating the water bills. And I have asked Megan if she would kindly explain a little bit of that to us.
Yes, and so when we aren't able to read a meter, either due to lack of staffing, or if the meter is actually unreachable, which means there's a car parked on top of it, or if there are so many weeds it can't be located. We do have new meter readers, so finding some of those meters is a little bit challenging. And then we do what is considered an estimate. So I have historically thought we averaged it the past 12 months. Well, I wanted to look into it further to make sure what I explained was correct. It is a little bit more detailed, and this is where software comes in handy. So I pulled an account just to kind of get an idea of how do we estimate, and how does the software do it? So what the software does is it takes the lifespan of the whole account. So if you have an account that's 30 years old, your average water is going to be significantly different than someone who has an account that's maybe three months old. So what our system does is it takes the last average daily consumption. So basically, it takes the bill read. So if our bill read is from, you know, the fifth to the fifth, and it's exactly 30 days, it's going to take the lifespan of your water account, all the water you've used, calculate the daily rate, and then multiply that by the 30 days of that billing cycle. So if the billing cycle is 29 days, it would be 29 days, and so forth. So once it does that, it of course gives us an estimated read. And so a lot of people are concerned with, well, what if you overestimate? We do overestimate because that's the computer. So if you've had a water leak, or something's come up in your water bill and all that, and the system will obviously predict a little bit higher. So I pulled an account and, which had more crap. Just to kind of get an idea, so when we estimate, the next read should be an actual. The actual read will actually adjust where we're at. This account is a prime example where we had an overestimate. We predicted 9,000 gallons were used when only 7,000. So when you go in and we present those numbers back to the customer service clerks, they go in and they actually have to manually adjust for that difference. Because of the fact it was an overread, can't go backwards in meter reading, it can only go forwards. They go in and they adjusted the account, and so you'll see a credit on that account history. So anyone who has an issue with the estimate, well, maybe it's too high, needs to understand that the next bill, if it is too high and the meter read actual is lower, then we manually go in and adjust those accounting. Every month, we have adjustments. It's not just a one-time deal. We adjust every month. And if a customer or resident has an issue with their water bill and it shows that it's an estimate, we are more than happy for them to call us and go out and reread it. And we do get a lot of rereads on occasion, especially if we're having to estimate certain routes. We try to get the bigger routes read first, because those are more of your residential, and then your smaller routes are some of your commercial, and some of those who are outside are ETJ, like the sunny Glen area. And once they call it in and say, hey, I got an estimate, I'd really like it reread, I'm not sure, I don't think it's correct, then we do a work order and it gets reread. And we also do try to catch all of the high reads. So our software is set for certain limits. So if your typical bill is 10,000 gallons a month, it's not going to be considered a high bill because that's your typical usage. But if your typical usage is 2,000 and you get hit with a 30,000, then we red flag it and we try to call and say, hey, or we'll do a special read ourselves and go out there to make sure you don't have a water leak. On occasion, we do have customers who have water leaks, and we want to make sure that they understand that, hey, it's going through your meter, we can turn your water off so that you can get your leak fixed, so that you don't have the next bill. And I know that the utility department, heat department is working really hard, and a lot of our staff has actually stepped up and helped to make sure we have actual meter reads. If you've ever looked at your meter, they're not always easy to read, and they're not always easy to find. Sometimes you really do have to dig it out. And it's hard because I know I've been there, and you know, you really do just dig out the little part you need. You don't dig out the whole meter. You dig out just to read what you need to read so that you can move on. There are about 2,900 accounts in Alpine. So we try really hard not to estimate, but it does happen. And it is all computer generated. We don't randomly go in and say, oh, we're going to charge you extra this month and next month, not so much. If we do overcharge, we go back in credit. A lot of customers will call and say, hey, I think you've overcharged, and we go back and adjust based on the new meter reads. If any customer ever has a question, I mean, our girls are really good about returning phone calls. They too have been short staffed, so it has taken them a little bit longer. But we can pull up your account history. We can show you. I had pulled one prime example is all the yellows are estimates in the past two years. So you can kind of see the fluctuation of, you know, when we estimate and when it's actual. And it is kind of a hit and miss. We really tried not to estimate every month, obviously. We kind of want to alternate it depending on how much staffing we have. But call us, let us know, email as well. You can find the emails online, and they do really good about trying to sit down and explain the situation. Not every estimate is incorrect. And so if you get estimated for 5,000 gallons, remember the numbers adjust themselves for the next month, so you're not charged anything extra because we estimated. You're actually, they balance it out between one month and the next. So we're not overcharging any one customer. If we do, we go back and we adjust.
Good. So if you estimate a bill one month, like this month, you won't estimate it next month?
We're trying not to. I can't guarantee that because it is dependent on staffing. We did have utility customer service clerks actually go meter read this past weekend to try and help out with that. We really try to alternate the routes. In the past, it was easy, you know, you start with Route 1. You've got to memorize Route 1, and you go to Route 12. There is 12 routes altogether. So say we get 1 through 7 done, and we have to estimate the last, you know, 3 or 4, then the next month, we want to start with Route 8 through 12. It really is dependent on our staffing and where we're at with how we read our meters. But we try to mix it up so that we're not estimating every month.
Is there a notation on the invoice so that the customer knows that it's an estimation that?
Yes. So next to your meter read on the invoice, it will have an E or an A. A is an actual read, and E is an estimate.
Should there be a big difference? Do you work with them on trying to clear that account?
On estimating, or?
No, if for some reason it's just more that the customer is able to pay next month? If it was underestimated or something in there on a set income, do you work with them?
Yes, so we do. We have an agreement. So if you come in and, you know, you don't want to get cut off, we actually have where you sign up with an agreement that you'll pay. So say your bill's $100. We give you 3 months to pay out that $100 plus your regular bill. So we spread it out amongst several months so that you don't get cut off into it's more manageable for you. And of course, we have budget billing. So if you're on budget billing, then you pay the same amount every month. And at the end of those 12 years, it's recalculated based on, one, if you have more money, or you owe more money, or maybe you paid more than you actually used, then it would lower what you pay every month. So those who have set budgets.
Even every 12 months, I'm sorry.
All right, and then the last thing is reminder that the town hall meeting on Thursday at 5:30, there has been a location change because of the really cold weather. Instead of at the visitor's center, it's going to be at this civic center. And we hope to see a lot of people there, also to write down their ideas for us. All right, city attorney, no report. City manager, no report. City staff update, none. Public hearings, none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda this evening has two items. First one, approval of November 1st, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the excused absence of Councilor Tandy from the November 1st, 2022 regular city councilman.
Okay, great, thank you. I need a motion.
Oh.
Okay, I need a second.
Clear.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor of the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. They approved unanimously. All right, moving on, informational discussion items, there are none. Action items, the one and only, City Manager.
Approved Resolution 2022-11-11, a resolution approving the board's commissions and committees handbook. A little background. And as we all know, this has been an ongoing project for a little over a year, ideally probably the past 20 years. And we had presented to council the handbook from another city, kind of showing like, hey, this is how other cities do it. They kind of give some guidance to those who are on boards and commissions. Jill has done a wonderful job taking that handbook and kind of adding in our own piece to it. So the majority of this handbook does reflect our ordinance. Who's responsible for what, the decorum, how do you get appointed? And then, of course, it breaks down all of the dos and don'ts of being a boards and commissioner. And it also provides a little insight with, you know, you having the conflict of interest, taking the TOMA trainings, so that they're aware that they follow the same rule and regulations as council. And once the ordinance was passed by city council at the last meeting, the handbook was updated accordingly to reflect not only the parts of the ordinance, but remove the sections that no longer apply. So before you today is what we consider a handbook for our boards and commissions for them as they get appointed or as they transfer in and out, to have something to kind of reflect and look at, like, you know, I'm the chair, what do I need to do? Or, hey, I want to get on a committee, how do I do it? This is also in the handbook, and it will be available online as well.
Good. Hey, I need a motion.
I'm going to approve Resolution 2022-11-11.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, discussion.
Just one correction on page 5, Jill. It says, the city of Alpine has seven boards, commissions, and committees. There should be six.
Already something.
Okay.
Yeah, somebody can just make an amendment.
Okay, I need a motion to amend.
I remove that we amend chapter 1 to reflect six advisory boards, commissions, or committees.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All right, let's move on to a vote with the amendment. All in favor, raise your right hand.
We're doing the amendment or the approval of the?
Yeah, amendment. Okay. All right, passed unanimously, the amendment. All right. I need a vote for the motion.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
That's the motion as amended.
As amended. Okay, one more time. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that would pass with four council members. All that done approved, raise your right hand, and one opposed. All right, moving on, city council member comments. Councilmember Stokes?
Right meeting. Good deal. All in favor.
Yeah. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Comments? Okay, I don't have any. Okay.
No comment.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So this brings us to item number 11, executive session pursuant to chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. The city council deserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time is deemed necessary during this meeting for any posted agenda item or to receive advice from the attorney as permitted by law. Tonight, the city council will recess into executive session pursuant to section 551.071 to discuss the West Texas Gas offer to settle the outstanding February 2021 operational flow order invoice. Okay, may I get a motion in a second to recess into executive session? I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to recess into executive session.
I need a second.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion in a second to recess into executive session. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to a vote. If you'd like to vote in favor of the motion, please indicate this by raising your right hand. Okay, it's unanimous. The motion to recess into executive session passed unanimously. The time is 5:46 PM. The time is 5:46 p.m. [END OF TRANSCRIPT]